ISM soil, so.
Yes.
That's you.
That's me.
Charlie, do you want me to leave these with the folder?
Yes, yes.
Well, I mean, leave them with the folder. ISM soil.
Yeah, this is the one you are.
This is the one I, yes.
Yeah.
Well, not the other, this, two of them.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, here we're looking for delineation.
Yeah, the name.
I was there and I walked through the area and I found no problems with the line. It was in some areas you were generous. And, I mean, you know, the land does screw up pretty much, so you can even stay more than that away from them. And you found out that already that the Peshawen Cemetery is not on this property.
Nope, it's downwind.
Okay.
Salt of it.
Salt of it.
Okay, well, I just heard about that. I didn't know where it was, so I figured that I would speak up before, if there was going to be a problem, you would solve it before it happened.
Yeah, this has already been through several levels of title review for the first array. This was included as part of it. I know exactly where that is. It's on the Hunter's Hill settlement land.
Okay.
It's on that parcel.
Okay, let's see.
Jim says it's okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept the wetland flag lines as described.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
We just wanted to double check on the access road that we had talked about last time. Coming around the park.
Well, if we can do it here, that's great. Otherwise, I gotta come back for a separate.
We just wanted to see what we have to do for it. Because last time, you guys had said, let's wait and take care of this first before we discuss that further. So, I had emailed Charlie about it earlier, I think it was the end of last week. And he had said that if it was going to be a temporary thing, then an RDA would be appropriate. And if it was going to be permanent, then most likely an NOI. So, just wanted to clarify with you guys when you stood on that.
Well, what's it gonna be?
It's gonna be permanent.
Permanent, yeah.
If I'm gonna build a road good enough for construction, I'll use it, permanent access. So, we don't have to go through the first subarray.
Okay, now, last meeting, you said that you didn't want to go through the array because you did not want to have a key to their property.
Right.
Here's a solution, and it wouldn't hit upon the wetlands at all. If you were to fence in the, that portion of the array, both sides, and then you would drive through, and then you wouldn't have access to either side. You would just drive through, and that would solve the problem of you building a roadway. It would probably be even cheaper on your behalf. Just a thought.
Okay, well, what I'll do is I'll go through the permit process. We'll wait till we know that this project's actually gonna happen. We still have, Massachusetts rules aren't finalized yet, so I'm way ahead of my skis on this. But I wanna be ready. So, once we know it's gonna go forward, I'll come back in front of you for an NOI to just go around that. It'll be done forever. We're way outside of them.
Well, NOI is for temporary, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We'd do permanent.
Okay, yeah.
The fire, I meant the fire chief up there, too.
In Jim's email, he said the proposed roadway was at least eighty feet away from the wetland.
Yeah, it's only twenty feet inside of where the existing silk fence is.
Just a very tiny corner.
I mean, that seemed to be, I wasn't here at the meeting where it was first discussed.
Yeah.
But RDA would cover that. I know it certainly should have been part of the Anred idea.
Right, yeah, it was the last minute.
It wasn't advertised, it really wouldn't have nothing.
We couldn't, you couldn't do that.
No, it was a separate issue altogether.
Right. Yeah, you guys, we do, we do it either way, Anred or NOI. If you want to do it with an Anred, we can do it.
We decide.
We do.
We decide.
We do the RDA, that would be.
RDA would be.
We just wanted to make sure we don't do an RDA, and then have you say we need another second test.
Well, it's eighty feet away from the wetland. Be assured of that. I can't see where that could be an issue.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, that's the next one. I'm getting right.
Yeah, you're getting, you're ready, ready for the next one.
It's, 'cause I don't have the map that you're gonna show us now.
No.
I only have that one.
Okay, where are we gonna go around this one?
Is that the first subarray?
This is the subarray we're going around right here, right?
Yes, we're coming around right here. It's this, it's this corner right here.
Yeah, we're not gonna do that right now. No, I would, okay, all right.
So, we'll come back for the RDA.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll do it that way then.
So, I think you guys voted, so the hearing's closed then?
Yes.
This one.
Land board next week.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, just flipping that map, okay?
Yeah, Steve Reed's on next.
Thanks, Dave.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, man.
Great, yeah.
Thanks, Ray.
Let me, let me go. Be back in a bit.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know where the, where it's there. All right.
Hey, wait, here, a notice of intent requested by the Reed brothers.
Be Reed, yeah.
I understand. You also went out and walked this one?
Yes.
I drove this one.
Jim and I did, we walked it all the way through. I have some serious reservations about this for a couple of reasons. One, first of all, if it's gonna be used as farmland, the roadway with maybe, except for getting it off the property, property line, would suffice. To start grading it, in some areas, you're tugging ten feet wide, not twelve feet wide. On your plan, you have, the whole thing is twelve feet wide. But the section that's next to the river is probably ten to eleven feet wide. And if you start grading it, you're gonna be destroying the bank of the river and going in. And I have tremendous reservation about that. When we got to the back of the property, we saw that you had several perk tests done, which gives the indication that you had said that you're going to put a house back there sometime down the future.
Yes.
Town law says twenty-foot driveway if the driveway is beyond a certain limit. Twenty feet in width. This is not gonna cut it. First of all, the damage that you're gonna do to the wetland, even in rehabbing this, I'm gonna call it twelve foot, even though in some cases it's not. And then coming back and saying, ah, we need a twenty-foot because we can't get a building permit unless it's twenty feet, is going to be totally ludicrous to me to try to put in. Might be a nice farm parcel, but to make a driveway that long with a twenty-foot wide driveway through the wetlands, and the square footage that it's going to encompass is just not gonna cut it with me.
If that's the case, let's continue it for a, for, till the next one. And I'll check with the billing inspector.
Okay, I checked with that yesterday or today. Actually, I checked with about three people, and I get the same answer, twenty feet.
Okay, and then?
For a single-family house.
Single-family house.
We did try and call, I did today, but she's on vacation, I think, until the nineteenth, so we can get over there.
And we'll see if we, you know, the only alternative to that is to go get a variance from the ZVA then, on that case.
Okay, so you wish to continue it?
I'll wish to continue it, okay.
Does that regulation apply to a single-family home or subdivision?
I was told a driveway. So, a driveway is a single-family.
It's a driveway. It would be a single-family home. There are some interpretations on it, and what we need to do is, I'll look at it clarified for the billing inspector. And if he says, we need to do that, then what we'll do is, I'll go, we'll just continue that. What I'll do is go with the ZVA and get a relief from the ordinance. The biggest key is to get it past fire chief. The fire chief is the key. Because you need to get fire truck down there.
Right.
And that's the key. And if that's the case, you can bypass that by putting a sprinkler system in the house.
By what?
A sprinkler system. A sprinkler system.
Okay.
And that'll, that'll get you, that's.
Okay, I have a couple of questions on wet water.
Yes.
Pools for electric?
Yes.
Okay, just, okay, that's gonna infringe upon wetlands down the line. Just, you know, looking at it.
Okay.
Okay.
There's a whole bunch of issues.
Okay.
So, let's, let me get it clarified through the billing inspector. If I have to go get a variance, if there's no use fighting the battle of it.
Yeah, no. Okay, I move that we continue it till the next meeting?
All set.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Got rid of you guys.
Ah, you got rid of me, nice.
Look at the last one.
Thank you.
I could ask him a question if I could.
Sure, go ahead, yeah.
No, this is about something else. We'll deal with this later.
Okay.
We have a hearing for a notice of intent request by Mr. Anton Robbins.
On this program? Oh, okay, all right, that's what I asked, what I'm asking. I'm sorry, we're moving on to the next order of business.
I just asked you when the next zoning there, thing is, the next meeting.
That's fine.
All set. Bob Barrow, B. Pro, Engineering, representing Tony Rogers.
You guys got a map?
Okay. Okay, wait a minute. Now, here's the dwelling here.
Yes, the one that is structured.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, let's, it's, oh, here's, oh, here's the house, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, and Williams?
Williams up here, then you make the corner heading east down Main Street.
Okay, all right, okay, no, I'm with it.
Okay, the first two lots are under construction now, but they didn't have any impact on the wetlands.
One of them up here?
Yeah, there's one here and one here. They're both under construction.
But this is Williams here?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is the third one. So, these two houses, the foundations are in, the first house is being framed now. This is just a foundation. And then this is the house we proposed to build. And so, it's a single-family dwelling, and it's similar to the other two houses. We kept the same setback.
So, the buffer zone doesn't affect this one?
No, 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 there was no, like you can see from here, no filling, no nothing, even in the hundred-foot buffer. So, but in this one, and sorry for that map, but I didn't get all colored up. But the wetland line with regard to this piece of property is shown in green. The pink line is the twenty-five-foot no-touch line. The orange line, the next one further out, is the fifty-foot nostructure line. And the yellow line is the one-hundred-foot buffer line. We are proposing some activity in the resource area buffer zone. The house itself is gonna be in there, but I'm showing it out. The deck, the house, will be constructed outside of the fifty-foot nostructure zone. And put a pool and a shed in there, whether they build it or not, at least it'll be included in the dossier intent in case they want to pull one, a permit in the next three years. Then they can do that. The septic system and the reserve area are completely out of the one-hundred-foot buffer zone. There's a little corner of the over big, but by Title V, that's not the, within the buffer. The reserve area is shown here. The septic tank itself is also completely out. It has to be fifty feet away, but in this case, the septic tank itself is completely out of the buffer. We are doing some filling. These perk tests were done by somebody else. And we use their data to determine the water table elevations. And that, that's what establishes the height of the septic system. So, these houses, all three of these, are gonna have the house with the filling and the septic system in the front, and then walkouts in the back to maintain what's back there now. The driveway's gonna come down, it'll be a drive under entrance garage below the house. And that's it. Like I said, I set it back the same distance, so they're all set back. And then I just pretty much, I remember that's what Tony wanted, so they're gonna pretty much look like three houses as you come down Main Street.
And someone else did the perks, who was that?
It was George Ayoub. I got his info, George Ayoub. A-Y-O-U-B. He's an engineer.
This the reserve?
Yeah, that's the reserve. This rectangle here, which is the same size, yeah. So, his perks are done here. He's got perk pipe through in the ground, which is required by DIA. So, he did the perks, September 2016. The wetland line that runs along this entire property, when it was one piece, was installed by a guy named Chris Capone. Doesn't work with us. He used to be on the Conservation Commission in Dartmouth for a long time, and now he's doing wetland flag.
And he was, he didn't submit a report?
He didn't, 'cause he, he did that for the original owners of the property. That was, again, before our time, when we got retained by Tony was to create the Form A lots, and then to do the septic zones. But we did locate the flags. They're all visible. We located with survey equipment, all based on the same control used to establish the lots up there. So, I think as far as what we're proposing, that sums up what we're proposing. We did get a file number from the state, and the state has no comments. I don't know if you have the information. I can give you the file number if you don't have it. Do you want that?
Absolutely.
Seventeen dash zero-three-one, zero-three-nine-one.
Zero-three-nine?
Nine-one. Zero-three-nine-one.
I got it marked down. I picked it up offline.
Okay.
Seventeen oh-three-nine-one.
Yes.
Okay, Charlie, you have a comment here?
That's a pretty long wetland line, and probably should be reviewed by somebody who's not a Conservation Commissioner.
Okay. I always, yes.
I know the comment.
I always look at that when you're, when you're exactly one hundred feet away, it's as, need to review anyway.
Do you read? Go ahead.
You know, I think that what your comment is, is justified, Charlie, to hire a consultant to review the wetland.
That's one of the problem with that. I think it's the right thing to do.
The only reason why I did that was because he walked into the house close to the central lot, so we get it. So, in CAD, when I copied everything, I just slid it to make sure I wasn't touching that. And I just, I stayed out of it here, so it could have shifted. But that's the only reason why it's close, because I'm nineteen feet away, and I need to be ten, so I can slide another nine feet. But he just walked from the house center, and that it's best to do the filling right in the front yard, rather than to have the septic system and the fill over the side.
Probably won't be much of a, much change anyway, but I still think it ought to be done.
Yeah, which is fine with us.
Okay, you want?
Jim, Jack?
I'm sorry, I monopolized this.
Charlie, you made.
You want a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we make setup a fifty-three G account for consultant review of the wetland line on this plan.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, and you know that the funds have to come in for that?
Yeah. How do you do that? You give an estimate first, or you get a proposal, and then?
Yeah, we'll set up an account, get an estimate from the consultant of what the fee might be, and notify you.
Okay. And in the meantime, I'll make sure, since the flags are about a year old, I'll make sure that it's, that you locate with survey equipment, so if there are any missing, I'll make sure I get a book back in for the consultants out there.
Oh, you need all the information.
Okay.
So, we'll get a continue?
I move that we continue the meeting till August?
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I passed that map, don't worry.
No, no, that was, that's what I took when Jim and I walked the weed property.
Downwind Realty.
You're up.
You are.
Thank you very much. I didn't know if you needed to read a public notice at all, but I'm willing to start.
Do you have the cards for?
I passed in the letter notification.
Okay. Okay.
Good evening, members of the commission, I'm Brad Holmes with Environmental Consulting and Restoration, along with Ed Jacobs, Registered Land Surveyor for Jacobs Driscoll Engineering. It's been a little bit of time since I've been in front of the commission, and I think the commission knows me because they remember the site, and here's the site, again. We have filed an Anred application to confirm the location of wetland resource areas on the property off of Somerset Avenue. The property is a large piece of land, as you know, off Somerset Ave, that runs to the, to the south of Country Hill Drive. I have some eleven-by-seventeens if anybody would like to look them. This, this plant is in your eleven-by-seventeen as well. There's a power line that runs through the property. There's an existing dwelling in this red location here, and the remaining portions of the site are wooded. What we have done is we've delineated the eastern half of this parcel, and it's shown here in the, in the vegetated wetland line. What we've done is we've located bordering vegetated wetlands, isolated vegetated wetlands, certified vernal pools, and two additional potential vernal pools.
So, basically, this is the same Anred delineation that was used previously, except for the extra water pool?
Not really.
Not really?
This is a current delineation that I performed myself over the month, the last few months. This is the same site, generally follows many of the same wetland lines, but it's, it's a, it's a fresh start. The wetland flags from before are not incorporated into this plan. This is a current delineation. So, I actually set these flags recently. This is a new, this is current and accurate. If you remember, at the last go-around of this, there was a little bit of mixing of delineations on that site. I had, I was involved in some of the delineations of that, some isolated pieces, but there had already been an ORAD in place that had been extended. It was very old, and it was kind of coming along with the property with some modifications to it.
The original property only had an ORAD.
Correct. That, that information is not part of this, this application. As I said, this is, this is a brand-new Anred delineation.
All lands south of the red line would be wetlands, am I correct?
Yes, actually, the green line. The green line is the bordering vegetated wetland line or isolated vegetated wetland line.
Okay.
The first red line is the twenty-five-foot buffer zone. This one-hundred, this second outer red line is your one-hundred-foot buffer zone to vegetated wetlands. And then you'll see the orange line. The orange line is the one-hundred-foot distance from either certified vernal pools or potential vernal pools. We have, as I, as I mentioned, we've located two additional potential vernal pools because your bylaw protects potential and certified vernal pools.
Okay, be aware that our bylaw states that the vernal pool is one-hundred-foot beyond the high watermark, and our protection goes an additional one-hundred feet beyond that.
Okay, what we, right, I'm schooled in your bylaw.
Okay.
From working with you in the past. What we have done is, you'll see these blue lines here? Those are the delineated limits of the potential vernal pools and certified vernal pools. Because as you know, the vernal pool isn't the same as the vegetated wetland line. It's, it's the pooled body of water.
Right.
So, those, those bodies have been located, and then the hundred-foot buffer zone, the, I'm sorry, the hundred-foot resource area to that vernal pool is located here in Orange. So, as you remember, this portion of the site fairly well. This delineation is probably along the same general lines, a little bit expanded than what was, than you've seen on plans in the past. This portion of the site beyond the transmission line is, is new to you as far as delineation?
That wasn't, that wasn't part of the original, well, it was part of the original filing. It was drawn from the plan, and, but we never considered it. It was taken off the table.
It was withdrawn.
It, it was withdrawn before my involvement, at least.
But it was withdrawn after the initial filing, when we said that what, he wanted to do up front, and we didn't want him to do it. We said, put it in the back, then, then it was altered, the plan.
But that's ancient history now.
Okay. Let's see, I gotta get your name. I know.
No. I'm Bishop Hasher.
Okay.
I talked on the phone, I think.
You talked on the phone.
Right.
And we emailed.
Right. Can I speak?
Yes.
My name is Bishop Hashen from Downland Realty. Uh, like we made a deal last time, all history is history.
Yeah.
We're starting a new line.
Oh, I know, oh, I know.
So, um, let's, let's scrutinize this, this line if we may, if I'm saying.
Okay, we're gonna do that. We're gonna do that, but I'm just saying, we never really saw that back part because of that intervention.
Sure.
That's all I'm saying.
I was, again, I was just trying to familiarize myself with the area and my, you know, my, my dealings with it. But as I said, what we're doing is starting new. There's a current accurate delineation of vegetative wetlands, isolated and bordering as well as the, the vernal pools.
It's pretty obvious that running that delineation is gonna require a, uh, a consultant and a fifty-three G. There's no way, uh, we could handle anything like that.
We were hoping you'd take our word for it.
It would probably be somebody, uh, anyway.
I expected that. Yes. I, so as far as your pro, normal practices for fifty-three G, do you send out one quote? You send out a few quotes? How do you normal?
Normally, we, we work with, uh, with Marty.
Okay.
We have a firm, much difference between consultants, some a little higher, some a little lower, but we have a pretty good relationship and, uh, I just think we should consider with that.
I'm not, I'm not in opposition to that. I just, I just was asking what your practice is.
And we'll submit, uh, a full site plan or one of these to Marty to get an estimate and we'll notify you of, of, uh, the estimate or. One or the other. And then we'll move on from there. Fair enough?
Yeah, that's what we expected, yes.
Okay.
Very fair.
So I make a motion that we, we each have a fifty-three G account. I represent consultant review this, uh, extensive wetland line and the isolated wetlands and the vernal pools.
Continue the meeting.
Pardon?
And continue the meeting.
Well, why don't we do one in a time?
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
No, you can.
I, I, I move that we continue the hearing, uh, to a future date, uh, August?
Nine.
Nine.
Nine. And hopefully, everything will be done by then. Hopefully.
Godspeed to Novarom.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take a hold on that?
I made the motion that you did.
So, uh, continue the hearing.
Continue the hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Okay. And, you know, we're gonna, not, we're not treating you like that. Just be, just, no, no, just be aware that, that, you know, that because that was new, uh, I just made a comment on that. That's, that's all it was. And, uh, you're not in the same ballpark.
David DeRosa asked to be placed on the agenda tonight. You're sitting right there. You're on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I got your call very late. Too late to call you back.
Yep, not a problem.
What do you need to tell us, David?
David DeRosa just wanna give you guys an update as far as, uh, why I wasn't at the last meeting. We had to get, uh, some of the lands delineated and, um, we had to get, uh, in order for the delineation to take place. In order for delineation, everything to take place and for me to get, um, uh, retained with a engineer, I had to get the, the wetlands delineated. Been talking to Mr. Mello. I've been kinda letting him know what the process has been, you know, right along. The, most of the land, the land has been delineated. We're just getting, um.
Who was doing the delineation?
Delineation has already been done by Brandon Fanner.
Okay.
And we're trying to, we're trying to knock down a date in which, uh, Mr. Barrowby can get out there and do the, we're hoping to have everything done before the, I believe it's, well.
August ninth.
August. Okay, the next, August ninth is when I'm trying to get everything done before. So, that's where we are.
Okay, so, so, well, they, they know what to do as far as filing with us.
That's correct.
And, uh, uh, getting, uh, everything in order for you.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Who's, who's gonna be engineering?
Uh, as far, uh, Barrowby has the retainer. If he can't get it done within the timeframe, I'm gonna try to find somebody else, but he's, you know, he has, he's been retained, so. And, um, the selectmen have a copy of that because there was concerns whether or not he was or was not retained by some individuals. So we made sure that I got a receipt of that and sent it out to whoever it needs to be. So the selectmen have a copy of that if you need that.
Okay. I don't have any other, any, any questions then since you're, you are going on the right step.
Right.
Right direction, finally.
Absolutely. You got it.
Okay. Jim, Jack?
Yeah.
So, uh, so I will be here for the next meeting on the night. Even if, for whatever reason, I mean, I'll still try to keep in, in contact with Charlie.
Okay.
Just to let him know, uh, what the progress is, but I'll, I'll be here for the next meeting as well. Hopefully by then we'll have everything on our plan and all.
Okay, alright.
Right?
Alright, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Titan Homes LLC. Isn't that you? CEO C.
Yeah. Like that, right? But you can move up front. There are three that need to get some, their extension to a roof for the tent for that new circle. Every second page. Hi, Ben. Good.
Okay, three signatures. Are you here on the, yeah, here on the day, Holmes. Okay, I move that we, uh, we issue an extension to Titan Homes Limited on three lots.
The next one up is Charles.
No, no, we need a second. To, to order, to, to issue an, an extension request.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
My address question, Alzamora, twenty-five twenty Blizzard Street.
No, uh, well, Charlie visited the site. Charlie?
Number seven.
No, seven.
The next one?
Yeah, it's.
It's, uh, Charles DeWolfe, uh, certificate of request for certificate of compliance.
You have visited the site?
I visited the site. That Peter is there, solidly announced.
Okay, you gotta make a motion then? You gotta make a motion?
If you sign the request or you just get a.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's done. Now, wait, do you get another certificate of plan? How many things have to, do you have one or two of these? How many things you have here, one or two? Alright, it's coming up. This is one of interest to, uh, Jeff.
Another request to make a motion?
We have a certificate of compliance request on ten L restorations for two twenty-nine.
You have visited the site?
I visited the site. First team is good there.
Yeah, I've been up there too and, uh, everything is in good condition. I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need to sign an enforcement order issued to Anton Rodriguez this afternoon for altering a wetland resource area or buffer zone on lot fourteen map board nineteen Main Street.
Okay, Charlie, you, uh, did the issuing. Could you inform us what, uh?
Maybe Tony has a comment. I have to say it right on the enforcement law.
Okay, that would be fine.
And then the, uh, agenda. Uh, then Tony, uh, June twenty-seventh, and we agreed to that he wouldn't be filling the lot. And today I've got a telephone call and the lot was being filled. He didn't, lost my mother and he just issued it to him.
So he went ahead and did the work after you'd already spoken to him?
The circumstances, he has been assured that, uh, it has an agricultural exemption for that lot.
Not fulfilling wetlands, it's not, it's not, there's no exemption for filling.
Well, we've talked with, uh, an engineer and the farm bureau and they both seem to think that, uh, it should be exempt. I don't agree, but, uh, that's the reason that he filled, started filling the lot again.
For what purpose?
He wants to make a hayfield for farm or plants or whatever.
Whatever, you know, his condenser told us. It was one before. And they tell me you can fill, uh, both the engineer and farm bureau told me you can fill right in up to even the twenty-five foot millipede zone. Under agriculture. I can renew that field back towards the original condition. I'm a member of the farm bureau since nineteen ninety-nine. I have, uh, in excess of twenty acres under cultivation. So I confirmed with all that and they tell me.
How many acres up there, Tony? You're talking that the way you're filling?
On that particular parcel?
Yeah.
On that particular parcel?
The way you're filling?
Two acres. Approximately that I'm filling?
Yeah.
Uh, maybe half.
The problem is, I didn't realize there was a problem. When he first started filling the lot, I mean, I could see the filling, but it never occurred to me. I didn't bother checking the plan that he, wetland, uh, line that he issued for parcel three. Uh, the wetland extends pretty close to that building that he's working with right now. And it's definitely within a buffer zone and it could be, uh, wet metal, who knows? But it's a resource area under Wetland Act and under the bylaw. Whether he has an exemption, I don't know. It seems to me, my recollection of agricultural exemptions, that the parcel had to be under agriculture for X number of years. Current, currently under, not recently. So that's what I base the enforcement order on. And as far as I, I'm gonna stick right by it until I'm proven how long.
That's, well, it's my understanding was that it had to.
I don't know.
Any help from the agricultural people that it would be under agriculture, not, uh, used to be.
Not, not proposed.
But that's what I want to talk. Can I get it put on the agenda so we can, you know, get some more information about it?
Can you what?
Can I get, get put on next month's agenda?
Sure, sure. I, I, I think.
I have no sense of sitting here arguing about it so we can.
Well, we're, we're, I don't know if it's arguing or discussion, but, uh,
Discussion, whatever you wanna call it.
But as, as far as, you know, or, or maybe even delineating the wetland to, to see where it actually is, if it's, uh, a wet metal.
They have delineated on that lot. The delineation that he submitted for lot three covers that lot as well.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's the same delineation all the way through. It starts at the first one.
Okay, so, so then, um, Marty then should, uh, he's, he's gonna open for fifty-three, a chief of the house to, to do that wetland, right?
Yeah.
So why not have her just go right down and, uh, into, into, into that lot and, uh.
Can we address it separately?
Well, yeah, it would be, it would be addressed separately, but if she's gonna be there, just let her.
I want, I wanna have the estimate be a consultant on lot three.
Okay.
It's only a hundred seventy-five feet wide and I want an estimate.
Yeah.
Okay, so I can get money into this fifty-three G account. When I come back next month, if she has to come back and I have to spend more money, it's fine.
Okay.
But I'm assured by a couple of, you know, people that supposed to know what they're talking about, about farming in the wetlands. If I can get on next month's agenda, we'll address it then. And then if you still feel that the wetland line has to be delineated, we'll do that.
When was it last found?
Uh, I, I, I'd be lying. I'd say probably twenty-five, thirty years ago.
Okay.
They came out, the farm bureau came out, looked at it and they said that definitely was under agriculture at one time, at one time.
Yeah, at one time, okay.
And they told me, because I had a problem with the town dumping water into it off of a drain. So we, we found the problem, we corrected the problem with the town. And now I'm trying to bring the field back to where it originally was back then. And they told me when they came out and viewed it that I was legal and even I could do everything right up until the twenty-five foot. Without, and filing any notice of intent, any IDAs, any of that. That's what they tell them. Now, my engineer tells me the same thing. He's guaranteed this problem before and so on.
Okay, uh, if we go ahead and sign this, it's, and we find otherwise, it's just gonna be removed.
That's all. I understand what you're doing, you know what I mean? I have a problem with that. I just wanna get on next month's agenda. So this lot can be addressed separate from lot three.
Oh, yeah, without a doubt.
If you're gonna have a consultant come in, if you're gonna have a consultant come in, I want the consultant to give me your estimate on lot three, which is gonna be a hundred seventy-five feet of delineation of that wetland.
And you know, what, what, what would have it do is come the same time when she does the other lot on Somerset Avenue, which would be, uh, it wouldn't be two drive downs.
Whatever it takes, you know what I mean? If it costs me more money, I'll, I'll pay the money.
Where is Tony's, uh, folder?
Tony doesn't have a folder.
Should be right there. Probably, uh, walk one down or three down.
Oh, that's the other.
I'm well aware of what the wetland line is.
Okay, here, here's the.
It would stop at flag twenty-five.
What's that, lot three?
You stop at, yeah.
No, no, it wouldn't, it would start here.
Right.
It would start here at fifteen. It would start here at 15, 15 to 25.
15 to 25.
15 to 25.
That's lot three, right?
Yeah.
It's okay, no problem with that. But if I have to spend the money on lot four, I'll spend the money, but if I don't, I don't want it.
Okay, civil that. And what's your proposal for the, for this lot?
Which one's that, Joe?
Yeah, well, this is the wetland line that the.
Lot four you're talking about? Lot four or?
Lot three.
Three or four?
No, three is he's building on, that's what we're going to do, the delineation.
15 to 25.
Four, four is where you're filling, right?
That's the enforcement order.
Enforcement order's on four. And what's, what's over here?
Nothing, a road.
A road, okay.
Yeah, this is William Street.
Okay, alright, there's a bond there, okay.
So next month we'll come back in and we'll, we'll work on lot four.
Okay.
If you put me on that agenda.
Separate estimate for?
Yes.
25 to 34.
At that time that you people told me I have to.
Well, the enforcement order says you have to. You have to either remove the stuff.
Right. The enforcement order.
Well, what we can do is.
Unless you can bring in proof.
That's what we're.
That we're.
We're going to bring it in.
Talk to Marty as well, though. When you call her on lot three, pick her brain for a lot about agricultural exemption 25 years ago.
Well, either we issue an enforcement order or we don't. I issued one, it needs to be ratified. If you don't want to ratify it, you want to wait a month, that's fine with me.
No, no, we, I think we should ratify it and, and then if something is different, we can release him next month.
Well, he's going to have to hire somebody to prove that lot we're requesting. As far as I, I'm concerned, it's a violation of the Wetland Act and RAFA law.
The 25-foot doesn't apply because already the bond is in the existing, the 25-foot.
That whole lot's pre-existing non-conforming.
Yeah.
There's no two ways about it.
But this wetland line comes right up to the back of the bond. I don't know what the scale is, but I could see the flags this afternoon and the piles were damn close to it.
Yeah, because they told me I can work in the 25-foot no touch zone. They told me I could go right up to that.
Forty feet maybe.
I mean, I've, I've been told that by the engineer, I've been told that by Farm Bureau.
Yeah, but somebody's got to tell us that.
Yeah, okay, that's not a problem, that's why I want to get on next month's agenda and we'll come back and we'll.
We can do that.
Okay, we can, we can do that.
Until then, I don't think I want to spend any money until I'm told I have to, at that time.
Well, if we issue this and then just know he's not going to do it until next month, that it's just going to be delayed, as far as.
I don't care.
That's okay.
I didn't put a timeframe on the enforcement order anyway.
Okay. So that, that, that would work then? That would work, so we'll see you next month?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're the tender and I'll, I'll come back and we'll, we'll discuss.
No more filling until this is settled.
Let's, let's, you make the motion for the enforcement order and then we'll.
I make the motion that we ratified the enforcement order that I issued this afternoon.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Okay, so that, that means officially you're not.
Charlie, pass it down.
Okay, but next week, or next month, if you have proof and we're going to be researching it too.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I look at it as 25 years ago, that's no longer farmland.
You can bring it back, unless.
Well, but.
Mass Farm Bureau says you can, my engineer says you can, and it's, it's, it's no doubt and no question and everybody in this town will tell you who knows anything about agriculture, that that was a farmland. Now it's Cameron.
Yes.
Cameron raised celery in that field for years, they told me, years.
Celery?
Celery in that field.
Did rot?
I don't know, I'm not a farmer.
My celery's rotting in my garden.
I mean, 15 acres of farmland, so I'll, I'll take that. Sounds good to me.
You don't qualify. You don't have 20. You have 20 under cultivation.
Okay.
Okay, that's double.
Okay, we'll see you next month.
All right, and the 53G account's going to be for lot three.
Lot three only, from num, from numbers 15 to 25.
That's where it is, yeah.
That's lot three.
Yeah, they've all been, you know, Troy Lang went out there and did them all, had the time to do them. He's got them all logged in.
Okay, well, if they're all accurate, you'll be, you'll be good to go.
Yeah. And I'll be back next month when I be on the other one, right?
Yep. Okay, Tony.
Hey, thank you.
What's this guy hanging around for? Uh, just a quick question for you. The, I had come in on one of the other lots in Naughty Point, I forget, I forget exactly what lot number for a guy named Mark Barrows. And we originally did an IDA and then we had moved a limited work back. I submitted a revised plan, remember that? It's going back a couple of months. Um, with a stone wall, it's one on, one of the lots on the left side going in. We had pushed the, the line back in, you had said that you would get me a letter or something like that saying you were receiving the plan.
I don't recall.
What's that?
You said an IDA?
Yeah, well, no, no, no. This was a lot that we already had an IDA, negative determination on, but they had made some planned revisions to the backyard. I, I can get you the information, but I was just wondering, I got an email from him today wanting to know, you know, the status of the letter. So I was coming, I had to come in to see Ross tonight anyways, you know, I had the COC, so I figured.
I know we discussed it.
Yeah, I, I remember and.
But exactly what?
They gave approval because of the, the land was actually going up and any wetlands were way beyond.
He was moving a limited work back, but it was not even in the watershed of the wetland, so.
Is it mound, if I'm not mistaken, there's a mound there?
And a stone wall.
There's some wetlands on the other side, but on a different, on a different.
In a different watershed.
Watershed.
Yeah. No, that's all, I was just asking, hanging around, asking about that, but I can, I can, what I can do with Charlie tomorrow, I can email you the information on it, refresh your memory, whatever it is, because I, it was one of the meetings I was at the last month or the month before and I submitted a revised plan at the meeting. And he had just contacted me today looking for any correspondence, so it's all right. I'll, I'll follow tomorrow. That's all right, that happens. Have a good night, guys.
Okay.
Charlie, where's the copies that the Division of Fish and Marine Corps made up? Made up for us, it says we got copies here somewhere.
Say it again, Bill.
It wasn't back in the thing.
We gave them approval to do that, to go ahead.
But they were supposed to send us a map showing us what they were doing.
Oh.
And how.
Um, well, this here is not, is not requesting our approval, it's just telling us that they're doing it.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what it says, copies made for members review and comments. Oh, here it, wait a minute.
It's not in there.
No, it's just the letter.
All right.
It's attached to your packet.
It's only letters, it's only a letter.
In the back, last, last page.
But it's not.
It's not, it was sent to us.
But there's no map or anything?
No, it come with a map. It's the dam behind the.
I know, I know what it is, yeah.
I'm going to need a map to find out.
What do you got, what do you, what do you got?
All they said is that no sultation sort of type of work can occur between whatever the date is, we got March.
15th and June 30th.
It's June 30th, it's all it said. They probably sent the same thing to whoever's building the fish ladder.
But they, but they also, they have approval from us, even though it's in Totten, they wanted a, remember, remember I typed it up and I, and I forwarded the letter.
Well, this doesn't deal with the ladder at all, just the work.
Okay.
When it can be done, it's just limiting the work.
So it's just an informative letter?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this needs to be signed for payment, both pages please.
Okay, I move that we pay Mac dues in the amount of 275.
All second, all in favor?
Aye. Okay, I have a request. As you know, that I've been active on the, on the chestnut trees.
I don't need to sign.
And.
Money I do.
I had signs made up that Tom is going to be installing out here on, on town property of the American Chestnut Restoration Program. And I am requesting reimbursement from the commission for.
Signature.
First page.
First page, he wants a signature over here.
I need to sign both pages.
I, I'm requesting reimbursement for the, for the signs.
Sign that, Bob, you got to sign the front page.
Should I start over again?
Yeah, we'll get this out of the way first, thank you.
Well, I, I saw him sign and hand it back, that's where I started.
Well, I signed it where it said sign.
Okay. I had signs made up, designated the, the American Chestnut Restoration Program for over here around the parking lot and over by the, the next lot to the south. I had three signs made up and Tom is going to be installing them in the appropriate areas for the community to see that the Conservation Commission is involved in the furthering of the restoration of the American Chestnut. And here's, here's my receipt here that I, that I paid and I'm requesting reimbursement if it's in your.
How do we do that? Charlie?
What?
How do we do that?
How do we do what?
Pay him the money he, he spent on the signs.
Then just, you just vote on it, make a motion and vote.
Yeah, but then where's the money coming from?
Comes out of our account.
Which what account, we got two accounts, three accounts.
Uh, not sure which account, I have to check that out.
That's what I want to know.
Or you could spend the 45 bucks and turn in a chip, that solves the problem.
Is that, that, what?
He could turn in a petty cash slip. If we approve the signs.
Okay.
He can pay for the sign.
I did already.
Oh, you did already?
I did already.
We'll approve the payment. You turn in a $45 petty cash slip and you get paid directly from the town.
That's good.
I don't, it's okay, it's.
I'll make a motion, do you approve the payment of that $45 signs? And then. We need to put a petty cash slip.
Do you second that, Jim?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You get your 45 bucks.
Okay, all right, what, now you say a petty cash slip.
Yeah, you signed up one, they have petty cash forms, that's a treasure.
Okay.
Not treasures, a town account.
Okay, but you have to do the minutes first, right?
Yeah, we approved it, the payment.
All right, so I'll have to wait a week or something to submit.
You're not going to go to Puerto Rico next?
I'm not going to go to Puerto Rico, nor, nor St. Thomas. Iceland, Iceland pretty soon though.
Iceland's coming this way. If we're all done, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. Oh, I'm like, I make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second.
8:35, Charlie. Jim, can you explain it to them guys in there again? You're the youngest, you're the guy that ought to be bouncing up and down.
This way we put the money in.
Hey, Jim, uh.